I'm talking in special order business. So before citizen comments, so kind of on the early side.
And I'll turn that now.
That'd be fine.
Workforce improves the performance of those organizations. And whereas learning develops individual and organizational knowledge and expertise. And whereas the American Society for Training and Development, the world's largest association dedicated to workplace learning and performance professionals, has declared December 7th through 11th, 2009 as Employee Learning Week and designated this time for organizations to recognize the value of employing learning. And whereas workforce development is everyone's business. And whereas the American Society of Training and Development, whose members are workplace learning and performance professionals, and the organizations in the city of Evanston, have demonstrated their commitment to developing the skills of employees and the workforce. Now therefore, I Elizabeth B. Tisdall, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim December 7th through 11th, 2009, as Employee Learning Week in the City of Evanston. Is there someone from Rotary here to collect the proclamation? Here it is. Thank you very much. Next, whereas the city of Evanston has consistently supported the human rights of its residents and of people everywhere. And whereas the protection and expansion of human rights necessitates a full discussion in our community to the greatest extent possible. And whereas the Universal Declaration of Human Rights was passed by the United Nations on December 10th, 1948, in order to both encourage the discussion on human rights and to facilitate its expansion. And whereas December 10th was chosen in 1950 by the United Nations General Assembly to honor the adoption and proclamation of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. And whereas Amnesty International was founded by people concerned with the promotion of human rights and the elimination of torture throughout the world. And whereas Amnesty International Group 50 was founded in Evanston over 30 years ago to facilitate discussion on human rights and expand its implementation. And whereas Amnesty International Group 50 is sponsoring a public discussion in Evanston on Human Rights Day on December 10th, 2009 concerning the issues of human rights and torture. Now therefore, I Elizabeth B. Tisdall, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim December 10th, 2009, as Human Rights Day in the City of Evanston. And given the importance of the issue of torture in our society, encourage everyone to participate in the discussion facilitated by Amnesty International Group 50 on December 10th, 2009. And the last proclamation. National Drunk and Drug Driving 3D Prevention Month, December 2009. Whereas motor vehicles crashes kill 1,042 people in Illinois during 2008. And whereas 362 of those deaths involved a driver impaired by alcohol. And whereas the December holiday season is traditionally one of the most deadly times of the year for impaired driving. And whereas for thousands of families across the state and the nation, holidays are a time to remember loved ones lost. And whereas organizations across the state and the nation are joined with You Drink and Drive, You Lose campaigns that foster public awareness of the dangers of impaired driving and law enforcement efforts to curb impaired driving. And whereas the community of Evanston is proud to partner with the Illinois Department of Transportation's Division of Traffic Safety and advocacy groups in that effort to make our streets and roadways safe. Now therefore, I Elizabeth B. Tisdall, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim December 2009 as Drunk and Drug Driving Prevention Month in the City of Evanston. And do hereby call upon all citizens, government agencies, business leaders, hospitals, healthcare providers, schools, and public and private institutions to promote awareness of the impaired driving and to promote safer and healthier behaviors regarding the use of alcohol and other drugs this December holiday season as well as throughout the year. That concludes the announcements and proclamations. And now, Chi, would you come up? Because I think we'll do this over there. So you can be right next to me. Chi Curley has won the 2009 Studs Terkel Humanity Service Award. And I know the entire council and most of the audience knows why you've won it, but in case there's anyone in the city of Evanston who doesn't know why you've won it, I am about to tell them. Chi has served as a volunteer curator of visual art exhibitions at the Noyes Cultural Arts Center in Evanston for more than 25 years. She served the maximum two terms on Evanston's Public Art Committee. And she has been honored for her outstanding contributions to the community as a past recipient of the City of Evanston Mayor's Award for the Arts. Since 1983, Chi has worked in collaboration with sculptor Barbara Goldsmith, organizing close to 200 exhibitions that have highlighted the work of both emerging and established artists. The Noyes Cultural Arts Center presents a dozen exhibitions a year and two galleries. And Ms. Curley has spent countless hours planning, installing, and publicizing each exhibit. Exhibits at Noyes have maintained high standards of excellence and have been sensitive to present multicultural points of view. Through her professionalism, selfless dedication, and great enthusiasm, Ms. Curley has increased public awareness of the importance of the arts by demonstrating a deep commitment to the importance of the artist's contribution to our society. In 2008, Ms. Curley and her family commissioned Conversations Here and Now, a bronze sculpture by Evanston artist Indira Friedus Johnson, which was donated to the city of Evanston in memory of Ms. Curley's mother. Displayed in Raymond Park just south of downtown Evanston, the sculpture consists of a circular arrangement of seven fanciful chairs embellished with comments from local citizens describing their points of view on living in Evanston, which were gathered at community meetings with local residents. The public art display encourages a civic dialogue and provides a focal point at which residents from disparate backgrounds may gather. I am so delighted to give you this medal from the Studs Terkel Awards.
Well, I'm as honored to be receiving this award tonight as I was astounded to receive your call when you first phoned me to tell me about it. And I can only say that I've had, I've just enjoyed so much working with the artists at Noyes. And it has been wonderful to be a part of that very vibrant institution, the Noyes Cultural Arts Center. And I also think that the city of Evanston has a wonderful public art program. And it just makes it, there are many, many things that make living in Evanston a wonderful experience, and the public art is one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, do you have public announcements and presentations?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, good evening. First, I'd like to ask Avanda Thomas, our Director of Health and Human Services, to come up and give a report on where we're at with inoculations for H1N1.
Thank you. I have good news to report. Across our nation, we have noted a slight decline in the number of H1N1 cases. We note that the trends in hospitalizations due to influenza-like illness are also decreasing. Just last week in Cook County, it was reported 241 hospitalizations as it relates to H1N1, which is down from the 350 hospitalizations the week prior. And the hospitalizations still remain remarkable for age groups, birth to four years of age. So as a response to the current H1N1 pandemic, the Evanston Health and Human Services Department has hosted 26 vaccination clinics, two community or public clinics, and two first responder clinics over a period of three weeks. These clinics primarily have been in our schools, which include Evanston Township High School, Northwestern University, daycare centers, and preschools in Evanston. We have been successful in vaccinating 11,989 high-risk individuals. We vaccinated a third of the expected and eligible populations in Evanston. This effort will cocoon or create herd immunity for those who are still in need of vaccine. But after our second community clinic, which occurred this past Saturday, which we still had vaccine available, we realized that there are still many providers in our community who still await vaccine delivery. We also noted a disparity in represented populations who access our clinics and received vaccine. So in an effort to get vaccine to people who need it and to allow greater access to underrepresented populations and the priority groups who are based by the Centers for Disease Guidelines, we contacted private providers and faith-based leaders today. And in one day, today, we were able to release and deliver a total of 700 dosages of inactivated form of the vaccine and 60 dosages of the live vaccine or nasal mist. We made an agreement that all providers would honor and respect the CDC priority groups. And all private providers that we contacted today were pre-registered to receive vaccine, but for many reasons had not received a shipment. Thus, we establish our lend program. And so when providers receive their shipment, they will return the borrowed supply to help us assure that all Evanston, all residents who need vaccine and are in the priority groups are served. We will continue to work with our private providers, our faith-based communities, and our pharmacies to lend vaccine for populations that they serve. I would like to take this time to thank the residents for their patience and understanding during this pandemic. I would also like to thank Evanston's fire, police, Office of Emergency Management, community partners, CERT volunteers, community volunteers, and staff who assisted in this shared responsibility in getting vaccine in the arms of those who are at greatest risk for H1N1 virus. For questions and concerns and access to the H1N1 vaccine, please contact Health and Human Services offices at 847-866-2948. Again, that's 847-866-2948. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Manager, that concludes my update.
Avanda, Alderman Grover had a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have a question as much as some comments. And I can't let you sit down, Director Thomas, without giving you and your lieutenants due thanks. I think we should give you, while right now, a field promotion to general because you have pulled off an extraordinary feat for a successful community-wide vaccination effort. This was an enormous deployment of people and resources and equipment and information and required preparation for a pandemic flu, which happened more than three weeks ago, obviously. And extraordinary intergovernmental cooperation and coordination. You were negotiating with Cook County, City of Chicago, to acquire as much vaccine as you could so that this could happen. Logistical and security efforts were part of this. A high level of responsiveness to our residents and a whole lot of hand-holding. With three school-aged children, I think I was pretty close to the action, and I know there was a lot of hand-holding going on. To have vaccinated nearly 12,000 of our residents in three weeks is really an extraordinary effort, and you made it look easy. With the assistance of significant staff, and if you will be patient with me, I think it's worth mentioning your staff specifically. Carl Caneva is your van driver, triage guy, and all-around troubleshooter. Pediatric dentist, Division Chief Greg Kleiber from our fire department. A university intern, Eric Palmer, who spread the good word. And a number of police officers from our police department who helped you with safety from your department. We need to thank Malia Amin, Saul Anderson, Cassenia Andrenova, Milka Baranowa, Barona, Brian Barnes, Denise Cobb, Alyssa Dean, Bruce Doblin, Anna Fesenfeld, Christina Ferguson, Maida Figueroa, Nancy Flowers, Shannon Growwaller, A-Rum Han, Cheryl Henley, Adelita Hernandez, Cam Hirth, Whitney Jones, Philip King, Barbara Lee, Margaret Mathias, Azalan Nisansi, or close to that, E.K. Agbo, Sri Pillai, Anna Renteria, Amy Sato, Ann Stewart, Dorothy Thrower, Gina Vale Starling, Sandra Varpness, Jonathan Webb, Zali Webb, and Nicola White. So thank you to your staff for making this happen. We will end for spreading good health in Evanston and goodwill as well. So thank you, General Thomas.
Thank you.
Next, Madam Mayor, Suzette Eagleson, our Public Works Director, who I'm glad I saw and is not here. Well, I will give the plug for her in her absence. Just want to remind residents regarding our trash pickup schedule because of Thanksgiving, we will be delayed one day. So if there's any questions about that of our residents, please contact, you can contact my office, 866-2936, but there's information on our website. Last item, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, is an update on our community budget planning process. We'll be moving forward with the final meeting of the planning process next Monday evening, November 30th, here in this room at 7:00 PM. They'll be on television, carried live and also then replayed. We have a replay schedule of the other workshops currently on the website, so if people are interested, they can tune in. And then on top of all of this, we are going to do a budget workshop marathon. And that budget workshop marathon will be a replay of all of the budget workshops beginning at 12:00 noon on Friday, December 3rd, continuing till 6:00 PM on Sunday, December 6th, 24 hours a day for three straight days. You'll be able to tune into Channel 16 and watch budget workshops. We are going to conclude the marathon with a special live telecast from the studios of ECMC, where residents will be able to call in their questions about the budget on Sunday, December 6th, beginning at 6:00 PM live. So if people are interested in the budget, I have no excuse not to know about the community dialogue. It'll be a marathon for three days on Channel 16, followed by a live call-in show on that Sunday. So we would encourage everyone in the community to be informed. The City Council has a special meeting scheduled for December 7th, where the outcomes of that will be announced or discussed. We will have all this information also on our budget website, cityofevanston.org/budget.
Alderman Shaw-Baptiste.
Will there be any other opportunities for those who do not have cable and those who do not have, who are not online?
At this point, those are the ways we are making it available. Certainly, maybe what we should do, and looking at our city librarian, Mary Johns, we could perhaps have DVDs available at the Evanston Public Library of the workshops, maybe two per workshop. And if people would like to check those out, where would be a good place, Mary, for them to get that?
We can have them at the circulation desk.
Have them at the circulation desk. So let's say the beginning next Tuesday, the 1st of December, we will have those available at the circulation desk. Thank you, Alderman Shaw-Baptiste. So we'll make that one more way for people who don't have cable, who don't have a computer, maybe they have a DVD player at home, and we'll make those available for people to check out.
Alderman Rainey.
City Manager, will there be somebody just collecting the questions on the call-in? Or will you be sitting there live in living color answering those questions?
We'll be sitting there live in living color answering them as people call. There will not be, the questions we thought would be best not over the air, but people will be able to call in. We'll have staff there. I believe our crack assistant to the City Manager, Joe McCray, has volunteered to be the, work the switchboards. And so he will, he will be taking the questions, and both myself and Marty Lyons will be there. And Steve Bartelbaugh, the executive director of ECMC, will serve as the host for the program.
That sounds like quite a show. I'll be watching.
Thank you. Does that conclude your report?
Yes, it does.
City Clerk, do you have communications?
No communications, Madam Mayor, tonight.
Thank you. Next is a public hearing, truth and taxation hearing for the 2009 property tax levy for the city of Evanston and the township of Evanston.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, under statute of the state of Illinois, we are required to hold a truth and taxation hearing on our property tax levy. Steve Drazner, the Assistant Finance Director is here, will give a brief overview as to the purpose of the hearing and then state for the record the levies that have been before the council. This will then be enacted, not at this point in the agenda, but at the point of the agenda where the second readings of the levy ordinance has come. Mr. Drazner, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm just going to read off some numbers and some increases to our levy for the current tax year 2009. Our city of Evanston total levy is $39,779,364, and that's a 4.56% increase. And this increase is entirely due to the additional levy for our Downtown 2 TIF expiration. We have additional equalized assessed valuation, so we wanted to take advantage of that, and we levied an additional $1.7 million. So that accounts for the entire increase of the 4.56. The township has a total levy of $1,349,796, and that's no change from the prior year. And the special service area number four has a total levy of $385,714, and that's a decrease of approximately 26%. And I think everyone is probably aware of the reason for that, and there was, we had to make an adjustment for, for an error in the levy from last year. The total increase for all three of these combined is exactly 4%.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
And then, Madam Mayor, I would like to, with your permission, to move on to the special order of business.
Wait, wait, Madam Mayor.
Yes. Ah, there is a light. All right, Alderman Rainey.
Are there no people here to speak at the hearing?
Actually, I don't have any sign-up sheets. Could someone get me the public comments? Does anyone want to speak? Ah, yes. Mr. Rizki, thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Well, I...
No, you were right.
I was hoping that there would be a long line, but whatever.
Mr. Rizki, go ahead.
I'm just, I'm going to speak on the goal, goal item with Northwestern.
Oh, no.
Oh, this is a truth and taxation hearing?
I'm sorry. This is just for the tax levy.
I'm sorry.
But I have you on the list, and I will call on you at public comments. Thank you. Sorry for the confusion. All right, Alderman Rainey? We, you tried. Thank you. That concludes the tax levy on now special order of business, City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank, yes, Madam Mayor, thank you again. The City Council has now discussed 10 of your proposed, of your 12 goals for 2010, where I have two remaining. The one we have on the agenda for this evening is Northwestern University. The goal, when it was established, had no particular parameters to it, so I thought I would just do a brief overview of some of the current partnerships and initiatives that we have with Northwestern. One new issue which I would like to bring up, and then some concluding comments, then whatever the council would like to provide direction for additional items to work on as part of this goal. This, some of the current partnerships and initiatives that we have ongoing with Northwestern University in no particular order. First is our relationship with the Northwestern University Police Department. As I think you're all aware, have a good longstanding relationship with NUPD and the Evanston Police Department, both looking at on-campus and off-campus issues. Really, when you look at relationships between city police departments and university police departments, this is one of the partnerships that's really held up as a model, not only among Big Ten schools and here throughout the Midwest, but really nationally as a close working partnership. And that is, again, a longstanding relationship that we have with the NUPD. The H1N1 health issues, as Avanda briefly mentioned, that is when one of the clinics that we did work, I guess Avanda, it was last week, with the students at Northwestern, working with their health services department, we were able to give special help and assistance to make those clinics a success, working with the health services team at Northwestern. The area of internships has, as ebbed and flowed, I understand, over the years, I think certainly we're at a high turn once again, placing interns not only with various aldermen, the mayor's office, but in departments throughout the city. We also make use of the federal work-study program. We're able to bring students into working city offices for a fraction of the cost associated with that hourly rate wage. The rest is funded through the work-study program. Intergovernmental relations is a relatively new area where we've been working with the university. They have a two-person office based here in Evanston that work on issues both in Springfield and in Washington, DC. And city staff has began a regular dialogue with them to look for ways that they can be helpful to the city as they're making their rounds, and in turn, if there are opportunities for us to be helpful to Northwestern as we make our rounds, both in Washington and in Springfield. We are having preliminary discussions with them right now about co-hosting an Evanston Day in Springfield in the spring, where we would bring the city council, the school boards, community civic business leaders, all in one day down to Springfield. There is one or two other communities in the state of Illinois that do that to raise a focus on issues in the community, in the General Assembly and the state government. So we're looking at ways to work more closely with Northwestern on that particular project. In the area of student housing issues, Alderman Homes, this past summer began a renewed initiative to work on student housing issues, has had various groups in her ward working on that, joined by Alderman Fisk and Alderman Grover with some of those issues. And we are building up, working with city staff on coming back to the city council with some recommendations as to some law changes that would be helpful in the regulation of the housing, as well as working closely with Northwestern University staff on recommendations that we feel would be helpful to, helping on their end. They had an off-campus housing office, which we're trying to advocate to have those services put back into place to assist students from the NU side with housing issues. So that's something that has been a focus of energy over the last three or four months and will continue through the winter months. Our relations with the Department of Athletics, a couple of different areas, probably the most successful of which was a Halloween event that we co-sponsored with the Department of Athletics. On October 31st, in conjunction with their late afternoon football game, there was a concern in the 7th ward regarding the impact of visitors to the Penn State game on trick-or-treating in the neighborhood. The university's athletic department, community relations staff stepped forward and said that they would help us sponsor a Halloween event. So Mary Johns from city staff took the lead on our end, and we were able to work and put on an event that was hosted by the NU Department of Athletics. You're all familiar with the discussions that we've had earlier this year on peddlers... You're all familiar with the discussions that we've had earlier this year on peddlers and those issues of concerning safety and sales outside of Ryan Field remain an issue for the NU Athletic Department, and we are committed to continue to work with them on those issues. We have also talked with them about ways to involve more of the youth of our community in events that the Department of Athletics put on. They have, a number of their coaches have summer athletic camps which involve students from the North Shore area. We're looking to have more Evanston students involved. They're also interested in helping us coordinate events for youth around specific football and basketball games that we could do. And they're also interested in helping to raise some community spirit regarding the success especially of this year's NU football team. And pending on the bowl game that is selected, Mayor Tisdale is, is pondering a, a challenge or a bet of some sort with the, the mayor of the community of the school we would be competing against in the bowl game. So I think there's lots of opportunities, especially with our community's youth, to work more closely with the Department of Athletics at NU, and so we're looking at pursuing those. In the area of infrastructure, lots of longstanding discussions regarding street issues, lighting issues, water infrastructure issues, probably too numerous to get into in any specific detail here this evening, but there are open dialogues with the university on a number of these infrastructure issues. Some of them are of a special interest to the city, some are of special interest to NU, and, and some are of interest to both parties, and so we'll continue to look at those infrastructure opportunities. In the area of economic development, Northwestern University has some traditional roles. It is played in the community. It is a, a member of the Inventure Organization, which also the city of Evanston is a part of. The university, along with the city, has been involved in the Technology Incubator Center. They are active in the downtown Evanston group along with the city. So we have approached them with some of the work that the city council has recently done on economic development to see how best Northwestern can fit their economic development interests into the overall city interests and which ways we can work more closely together. And finally, in the area of current partnerships and initiatives, as you all know, the university's committed to paying for a new fire engine. We're in the, the process of getting ready to come to you probably in January with the purchasing decisions regarding the beginning of the procurement process for that fire engine, so we're very excited about that. In the area of new issues that have, that have come along in, in recent weeks, the university is beginning a strategic planning process, and they have called for interest from members of the university community while they have not specifically invited the city of Evanston to participate. I think it's appropriate for us to volunteer our interest in their ongoing, or they're, they're just starting, I should say, they're just starting strategic planning process. So I intend with the council's consent to send a letter to the provost, who is Mr. Lindisner, Dr. Lindisner, who is leading that process, asking for comment from the university community by next week to indicate that the city of Evanston would be interested in participating in their strategic planning process, especially in those issues that affect the larger university community. So I'm hopeful that that would be a new, a new piece that we've been, have not been involved in in the past and talking with some of you from previous strategic planning processes, the university's been very happy to share the results once they're completed, but that the city has not played a, a very direct role in the actual planning itself. So that may be an opportunity for us. Then lastly, I guess I'd like to spark on one final point, and that is in the area of overall communications. Certainly, the city's relationship with the university and vice versa has sometimes been contentious. In my brief time here, it, it seems to me that many of these issues surround communications, knowing who's doing what to whom, and I think that there may be opportunities for the city itself to be a better catalyst with our community organizations and our neighbors of the university to share the information that we have to help them advocate with the appropriate word alderman on specific issues that come along. So I don't have any specific ideas to present to you this evening, other than my sense is, is that as we look for new things to do to work on that relationship, that perhaps there are some catalytic ideas, initiatives that we could take on that would help with overall communication. So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, again, as you selected this as a goal, there was no specific direction given. Just wanted to kind of whet your appetite a little bit with some of the things that are currently going on and would ask for any additional direction that you'd have. Otherwise, we'll continue to move forward on the items identified.
I wanted to take this moment to read from today's Northwestern Daily so that we could get Northwestern's view of the relationship. This is from Dr. Donald Mish. Thursday concluded the onsite joint Evanston Health and Human Services Northwestern University H1/N1 vaccination campaign for eligible faculty, staff, and students. This effort was part of the larger attempt to coordinate and implement the largest vaccination campaign in the history of the United States. As the executive director of university health services, I want to express my great appreciation for all those involved in this effort. Evanston Health and Human Services has been a wonderful partner in this endeavor, coordinating the overall onsite campaign and personnel, as well as providing vaccine and responding quickly and assertively to daily vac, variations in vaccine supply. Constant communication, collaborative effort, very hard work, and good humor have been the order of the day, and I believe the city of Evanston and NU should be very proud of their partnership in this important public health event. So we can do it well sometimes. And I'm glad you're still here, Avan. Does anyone, Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My interest in the Northwestern as a goal is really in the area of economic development, and I would like us to be working as collaborative, collaboratively as possible with the university, our university, to attract and retain businesses and employers here. I'd like to improve the city's relevance to the university's own economic development efforts. I so often get the sense that the university is a world-class institution with global aspirations is just kind of looking over our heads beyond to Chicago and the larger world, and I'd like for the city of Evanston to have something to offer to that conversation, to those efforts. More specifically to the seventh ward, I'd like us to look into what we can do to implement the Central Street Plan, particularly in relation to the university's properties on Central Street. The parking lot west of Ryan Field, and then also not as part of the Central Street Plan, but pedestrian access along Isabella, the south side of Isabella, there are sidewalks missing there. And maybe this can be done in conjunction, I think, with some sewer work, the connector with Wilmette that will affect Ashland. So if we could look into that, that would be great. And finally, having a top-tier university in Evanston, I think, makes an incumbent upon us to help our university realize its goals and becoming a leader in scholarship and research and in its, helping it with its ability to compete for the best students and the best faculty. And to do that, we have to keep Evanston strong and vibrant, and so what we can do to help the university maintain its top-tier status, I think, would be a benefit to all of us, to the entire city.
Thank you. Someone's light flashed on and then went off, so if there's anyone I'm not, I'm sorry, Alderman Jean-Baptiste.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I echo the call for greater involvement with the university on economic development matters. I also would suggest that we more aggressively pursue internship opportunities between the university and, and our departments, and perhaps some access to continuing education for some of our people here. We do have some experts leading various departments that may be able to benefit from perhaps just auditing some classes that may enhance their knowledge and skills. The other area that I'm interested in pursuing in terms of discussion with the university, in the late 60s, when students were real, really proactive throughout the whole country, the university, as far as I understand, had made some commitment to give a certain number of scholarships to Evanston students. And I think that since that the student movement has really subsided significantly, the university has not really lived up to those obligations. And this information can be researched and, and pulled forth, so I think it would be important to, to raise that. The other thing is, the issue that we've always talked about is some kind of long-term commitment on budget issues. I appreciate the gift of the engine, but I would like to see some kind of long-term commitment, recognizing that we do matter to the university, and of course, they do matter to us, but we also need to help define how it is that, that, that contribution can be made. The other thing, which may be a little bit thinking out, outside the box, is that the experiences of those who, alumni who have come through the, the university cannot be divorced from the experience, their experience in the city of Evanston. So since President Shapiro is an easygoing guy and open to all kinds of ideas, and since he had the speaker, the keynote speaker who advocated all sorts of new thinking, I would suggest that the call for alumni giving in contribution include a contribution to the city of Evanston. So, city manager, I know you also are creative, you're a cutting-edge person, take it and run with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I did want to say, based on my experience as seventh ward alderman, which was sometimes frustrating because neighbors would come with concerns, and I would call the university and have a great deal of difficulty getting to the right person, whoever the right person might be, and recently talking with neighbors who live next to the cafeteria slash restaurant, whatever it is, in the first ward. The neighbor whose bedroom now has a TV reflected in the window every night said to me, Liz, there just has to be someone to call. And I thought about that a lot. And what I did eventually in the seventh ward was to go to the community development director at that time, Mr. Wolinski, and referred, all the neighbors called him, and he was able to call the right people at the university and get a response. And so I don't know if we need to designate a staff person who has contacts with the university as the city person who you could call, who would go to bat for you, and who would know who at the university was the right person and would have a face to put to that person, but not suggesting hiring anyone new, but adding that responsibility. I think we'd end up spending far less staff time if we had someone you could go to immediately to resolve some of these problems than, than we'd spend on staff time for that one person. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, these conversations are all about collaboration, and wouldn't it be interesting if Northwestern had a person on staff that we could call? That way you'd cut out the middle man or the middle woman, so perhaps that is something that they could collaborate with us on.
I, I think the need...
We have the complaints, they have the answers.
The need for a person to call is something we can all agree on. I see no other lights.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Next is citizen comment. First, Mr. Rizki has signed up to speak, and next would be Thomas Gonzalez.
Janad Rizki, I'm going to just speak briefly on Northwestern goals. An issue came up probably maybe more than a year ago about Northwestern's planning. And in their land use plan, basically, they're, they're changing the access of their campus for, to an east-west access rather than a north-south access, and really limiting what was eventually going to happen is residents of Evanston are not going to be able to have access to the lake from the south end of their campus. It's going to be very hard to go there. And I think the council really should have picked up some leadership on this issue and dealt with Northwestern, because after the music school's built, your residents will be really complaining as to what happened here. And I think the city really dropped the ball on this and didn't deal with it. And that's, that's one of my issues, the really what happened there. And then the, the other issue is, and this is probably an, an issue that's come up over the years, is really this Northwestern University is about 8% of the fire department's calls. And that, to me, translates in about to $900,000 in this budget year. And while the recent, you know, we've got a fire incident from the city of half a million dollars, as Alderman Baptiste was saying, there has to be a long-term commitment. And if that commitment's not there, then the city needs to decide if it can afford to keep all these services with the fire department. And I lived close to the fire station by Northwestern, so if that station's cut, I mean, it's cut a service to me, but I, I mean, I think if we can't afford it anymore, it's time we have to deal with some of these issues. And some might argue that, you know, life safety is sacred, but, you know, recently the city didn't have enough money as this TIF ran out here, and it, it basically shut the sprinkler system down in the Maple Avenue garage. So life safety and money do, do tie together, so you can't afford everything, really. So I think those are the kind of things the city has to deal with. And, and I just want to comment on one last thing. At P and, P and D tonight, there was some discussion about the community gardens. I've been a gardener there for 15 years. The community gardens, basically, the revenue the city gets is $60 a gardener. And I agree with you that, and I heard this, that the gardeners should pay because the gardeners are the only ones benefiting. So I mean, if the fee is raised, it's fine with me as a gardener. So I mean, raise the fee, but just remember, there's 200 gardeners, it's $60, it's $12,000. Raise it to 100, it's only going to be $20,000. You have big budgetary problems that go beyond that kind of money. I mean, you're really dealing with issues, as you know, in your streets and sanitation, there are a lot of money with this trash collection, and that's not going to do much. So you've got to deal with some real issues.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
I could, um, I actually have an explanation on, I, I think that the comment about the sprinklers in the Maple Avenue garage and I...
Alderman Wynn wants to speak to that, too, I'm sure.
Okay, I wasn't sure if Doug was coming, because I, what was said, it was not accurate, and I'd like for the city residents to understand the accuracy of what happened with the Maple Avenue garage.
As I understand it, the, when the Maple Avenue garage was constructed, there was a code requirement to have the sprinkler system installed. Since that time, that is no longer a code item, and it was determined that it would cost a lot more money to continue to paint and maintain the system that was not going to be necessary. Therefore, the city made the decision to eliminate that, with the exception of the area that's occupied by the staff and the office.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn, does that cover what you wanted to say? Thank you, Alderman Burris. Is Mr. Thomas Gonzalez here? Thank you. You have three minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Thomas Gonzalez. I live across the street at 2129 Ridge Avenue, and I'm a senior undergraduate student at Northwestern. And this is my first time ever speaking at a, something like a city council meeting, and I, I'm pretty sure that Evanston City Council doesn't very often hear directly from Northwestern students. And that's actually part of why I wanted to come and, and offer my comments today. Evanston's younger residents, particularly as students, are much less vocal members of the community, which makes sense. We're completely new to the world of citizenship. We're still learning about things like politics and civic engagement. However, in light of the recent debate over the alleged zoning violation, whatever it may be, I decided to take the initiative and speak before the city council and my fellow residents. As far as zoning violation petition, I don't agree with it, but I... As far as zoning violation petition, I don't agree with it, but I also realize that the council is not involved really in that issue. So, and I didn't really want to dwell on that issue, but instead, ask the council and neighbors of the university to consider the following. Some residents might contend that because the university doesn't pay property taxes, it is not the city's responsibility to cater to students or the university's interests. However, I did like some of the comments that you were making in regards to the goals with Northwestern. I think you guys are, it seems like there's positive steps being made. But however, I would like to remind everyone that a huge number of students and other members of the Northwestern community are, in fact, Evanston residents, and we live in apartment buildings or houses and pay our property taxes just like everyone else, not to mention driving up the property values near the university. But even those students who live in university housing actively contribute to Evanston in other ways by supporting local businesses and often volunteering their time for service projects that benefit the entire community. And so just because we are young and less vocal than other residents doesn't mean that the city does not have responsibility to consider our interests and needs when making decisions. And I know that the positive steps forward on community issues won't arise through marginalizing the student population. I did notice there wasn't really any mention of work between the community or the Evanston City and students, even though, I mean, talking about, you know, several thousand people who live in Evanston, and the only issue was housing, property negotiations, I guess. And so therefore, I hope that we can begin to have a more civil and more constructive conversation between the Northwestern community members, particularly students, and the rest of Evanston's residents and the city on the topic of working together to improve the neighborhood, our neighborhood and city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes Citizen Comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one request of you. On the Administration and Public Works agenda tonight, and on the consent agenda, as far as I know, no one's taken it off, our series of resolutions abating property taxes. And Steve Drazenner is here, and we've asked him to speak to that for the whole council, so I don't want to take it off the agenda. But if he could speak first and just-
That would be fun.
...clarify for everybody, he presented us with an excellent memorandum, and I thought for, I mean, since only we saw that memorandum, he could explain how the abatements work.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Again, basically, the way the abatements work is, we don't levy an amount for our debt service payments. When we issue bonds, we file the debt maturity schedule with Cook County, so they levy on our behalf. They're levying the full amount of the bonds, of the debt payments. So what we need to do is, we need to abate the portion that's paid through our enterprise funds and the TIF funds. So that would be water, sewer, parking, and any of our TIFs that are allocated to some of those bond proceeds. So that's basically what those abatements are all about.
Alderman John Baptiste?
Part of what we wanted to get done through your intervention is to inform those who are there listening as to the implication of that. What does that mean? I mean, I'm familiar with some of the terms, et cetera, et cetera, so I know what you're talking about. But what does that mean for the average taxpayer out there?
Well, if we didn't have these other funds to help pay some of this debt, the property taxes would increase by whatever that debt amount is, by that extra levy amount over the assessed, the equalized assessed valuation. And I don't want to get into too much math, but basically, at least the debt service portion of the levy would probably double. So it's about, I believe it's about a little over $10 million, it would go up to about $22 million. So it is more than double what we're levying for the debt service. I hope that answers your question.
All right. And by abating the levy, then we're actually reducing the amount that the county would have levied, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, less impact on people's pockets.
Right, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first item on the consent agenda is the approval of the minutes from October 26th. Since several people have corrections to that, I'm going to take those off the consent agenda. M2 is approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of November 9. On behalf of Administration and Public Works, we ask your approval for the City of Evanston payroll through November 8 in the amount of $2,299,494.90, and the City of Evanston bills through November 24 in the amount of $4,229,050.88. On behalf of the committee, we ask your approval for a contract with Total Building Services for janitorial services at the Lorraine H. Morton Civic Center, Main Library, and Service Center in the amount of $152,040 per year. Item A3.2 is a request to approve a contract with Nationwide Janitorial Corporation for services at the police fire headquarters and the outpost. This is in the amount of $52,474.56. We also ask your approval of a sole-source purchase of digital voice logger upgrade with, from Word Systems, Inc., for the 911 center in the amount of $31,346. Payment is from the emergency telephone systems account. Next, approval is requested for the lowest and responsive, responsive and responsible proposal for Ford OEM parts warranty and service repair for automobiles and light trucks in the amount of $42,000 from Gulf Mill Ford. And recommend, we recommend approval for medium and heavy trucks in the amount of $46,000 from Breedham and Ford in Glenview. Next, we request your approval for a single-source purchase of one-riding mower for the Parks and Forestry Division in the amount of $21,245.55 from Reinders, Inc., from Franklin Park. Approval is requested for change order number four for the Basin S8-2B Relief Sewer Project Contract II. This is with DePaulo Company, and decreases the amount of the contract by $86,663.51 to a grand total of $6,67,099.18. It also extends the contract period for 137 days. 93% of the project costs will be from the IEPA loan funds. The following, I'm going to read these as item numbers. These are all of the debt property tax abatements, general obligation bond debt property tax abatements. A5, Resolution 76R09 through A14, Resolution 85R09. They are all abatements. Next is Resolution 86R09, which authorizes the transfer of motor fuel tax funds in the amount of $122,500 for staff engineering and $650,000 for general maintenance of streets in the city. Resolution 89R09 authorizes the city manager to execute an amendment of the lease agreement between the city and Chicago SMSA Limited Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless. City manager, are you going to, you're going to come back to us, and this is going to be off the consent agenda, you're going to come back at our next meeting, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Moving right along. Ordinance. Ordinance is for introduction, amending Section 923B of the City Code, increasing fire department transport fees. This is for introduction. This will raise the transport fees to the maximum allowed by Medicare. Next, for introduction, is Ordinance 11009, which decreases the number of Class C liquor licenses due to the closing of Jamaica Jamaica. Ordinance 112009 is for introduction, increases the number of Class D licenses with the opening of Mecca Fresh. This is a conditional license. Ordinance 115009 increases the number of Class C liquor licenses for Bistro Bordeaux, and that is at 618 Church Street. For action is Ordinance 10109, which amends Title III Business Regulations. This is for the foreign fire tax companies tax. This adds the police, the fire chief, and one additional member to the board. Ordinance 107009 is the Evanston tax levy, that's for action. Ordinance 108009 is the special service tax levy, and Ordinance 109009 is the township levy, which is off the consent agenda. Ordinance 116009 amends Title IV, Chapter 23 of the Energy Code by adopting the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code. This is for introduction. Also for introduction is the vacant building amendment, which provides for various amendments for the vacant building code. Next is a request by Evanston Housing Coalition for up to $22,000 for the repurchase resale of a foreclosure on a newly constructed revitalization project at 1710 Dodge Avenue. Ordinance 105009 is for action, and it rescinds the Evanston landmark designation for the property located at 1819 Dodge Avenue. Item H1 is acceptance of the township annual audit.
That off the consent, please.
Yes, sir. That will be addressed by the committee chair. And then other committees, I'm assuming we should remove consideration of approval of Economic Development Plan from the consent agenda.
And Madam Rainey, had been previously removed.
Pardon me?
Had been previously removed.
Oh, okay. I beg your pardon. Okay. And now we have confirmation of appointments, and these are all to the budget, the mayor's Budget Task Force Committee, Sue Calder, Steve Engelmann, Lou English, Joseph Flaniken, Alex Granacek, Candace Hill, Jean Linwall, Nikki Pearson, Hecky Powell, Mark Sloan, Raymond Summers, Ryan Hall, Deborah Hirschfield-
Those aren't the but-
Pardon me?
Stop at Ryan Hall. Now you're at the Public Art Committee.
Oh, okay. Next is the Public Art Committee, confirmation, Ryan Hall, Deborah Hirschfield, and to the zoning board of the field, Scott Gingal. For reappointment, Marva Berger to the Board of Ethics, Susan Churko to the Commission on Aging, Frank Stridefield, Commission on Aging, Dave Galloway, the Plan Commission. And with that, I move adoption of the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman John Baptiste?
Aye. Nine to nothing, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Rainey, Administration and Public Works.
Madam Mayor, the minutes. We're going back to the minutes.
Minutes first.
Madam Mayor, October 26 minutes were removed from the consent agenda because of, at least two people have amendments. One of those is me, and that is under A6. Ordinance 85009 amends Title III, Chapter 13 of the City of Evanston City Code, peddlers and solicitors. The minutes should be amended to read that the item was tabled pending the completion of the football and basketball year, and the city manager would come back to us with new information.
Thank you.
I need a second.
Second.
Hold, wait a minute.
The city clerk would like to respond.
I beg your pardon, Alderman Rainey, but it was not tabled. What was said was that the council had approved the recommendation that the city manager would find a, here it is, to come up with an alternate pedestrian safety measures, and then come back after the conclusion of the 209-210 Northwestern basketball season. So it was unanimously voted, I mean, unanimously voice voted, that the recommendation be accepted, not that the peddlers, solicitors, ordinance would be accepted.
Well, I know that you have the tape of that meeting, but it certainly was my recollection that this was, I mean, the matter reads, Alderman Rainey moved approval of the ordinance that also received a second, the ordinance passed with unanimous vote.
Okay.
That never happened, and it was my understanding that it was tabled.
Okay. Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey, I had made that change because I worked on two sets of minutes. I did not send in the correct minutes at the time, and it did state in the second set of minutes that the recommendation was approved, not the ordinance.
Okay. All right. I don't want to have a debate on this. All I want to make sure is the record is clear. The minutes that we have online for this meeting to approve from October 26th, read as follows. Alderman Rainey moved approval of the ordinance that also received a second, the ordinance passed with unanimous vote. That is patently incorrect, and it needs to be deleted from the October 26 minutes as a correction to the minutes, an amendment correction to the minutes. I will sit down, and the rest of you can discuss what really happened, but it was my recollection, at least I think it was, and when you look back at these minutes after years, you try to look at the intent. And it was my recollection that it was the intent of the council to table this so that the city manager could bring it back, it would still be on our agenda, in the backburner, for consideration, but at this time, it was tabled.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I suggest we refer to the tape of the meeting for the record of what transpired and incorporate that into the minutes. My changes are small. Thank you for your minutes, Mr. Clerk. At the bottom of page two, under Citizen Comment, Mr. Rizki's name, I believe, does not have an S in it. On page six, these are the minutes that were in the packet. Items for discussion under A5. Resolution 75R09 regarding extension of an electricity supply agreement. Underneath the comment, Alderman Rainey moved that the resolution be removed from the agenda. A unanimous vote was obtained, and the resolution was moved, reads, and I believe actually the word moved should be removed. And then on page seven, under H1, for the green building ordinance, in the last paragraph of the commentary of our deliberations, that begins Alderman Wilson, the second line says, prior to the effective date of this ordinance, the word effective begins with an E. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Alderman Rainey?
Yeah, I want to make sure I get a vote to remove Alderman Rainey moved approval of the ordinance that also received a second, and the ordinance passed with unanimous vote. I want to amend this to exclude that statement.
Alderman Rainey?
Yeah.
Are you reading that statement from-
Today's minute, from the minutes from our packet.
From the minutes in the pack.
Yeah. Now, just to remind you, just to remind- Now, just to remind you, just to remind you, there was an issue recently where our legal department opined that minutes cannot be changed in the office. They need to be changed publicly if they are subs, if the changes are substantive. It is my belief that this is substantive, and that this kind of amendment cannot be made privately. It's got to be made on, in public. I mean, this isn't a matter of changing an E to an A or an A to an E. This is a statement that is, I mean, this is just a simple amendment. I don't, why are we having this discussion?
We're listening to you.
Okay. But I mean, I can't have to keep standing up because the city clerk keeps saying that's not what was written. Well, it's not what's written today because he changed it without the council changing it, and the council needs to change it. That's all I'm saying.
The.
And, yes, all I'm going to say.
It's, yes.
Alderman Wilson? City Clerk? Let's.
This is, this is going to be the end of it. When I was mentioned, when it was mentioned to me that the minutes reflected wrongly of what I put for item A6, I went back to the tape, I listened to the tape, and I recorded. If I'd given the chance to speak to that issue this afternoon, it would have been corrected because the minutes were corrected for that A6 item. As for the other ones with the E or whatever, that wasn't, those comments were not given to me. The comments, those changes had been made, and I would have, like I said, given that comment this evening before the minutes were included in the consent agenda like I've done in the past. So the minutes had been corrected with the right wording that the agreement was, as I read before, that the council had a unanimous voice vote to recommend that the city manager would implement an alternate pedestrian safety measures and then come back to the council after the conclusion of the 209-10 Northwestern University basketball season.
That is what's in my minutes. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
I don't know what the confusion is because the error initially was that, you know, that's what was said, as Alderman Rainey said, all you're saying is that you subsequently corrected them. Okay, fine. And subsequent correction is something that has to be approved at the council level. So the motion to amend the minutes to correctly reflect what you just said is appropriate, and I second that. And so that means that the council is amending that officially. And you have, in fact, made the correction. I don't think it's, I mean, it's a fact that there was an error in the minutes, and so Alderman Rainey is addressing that fact. And when it's presented to us, legal has said we have to approve the minutes and make amendments openly, right? So even if the clerk made the corrections in his office in response to what he has heard from us, we had, we had held the minutes, so we took no official action to amend the minutes at that time. We just approving them now, right? Okay. So that amendment that is reflected is what Alderman Rainey is saying ought to be moved now and reflected, and I second that.
That's correct. Alderman Holmes?
I was going to make the same point, that all we needed to do is move vote now because it's been moved in second.
Been moved and seconded, and seeing no further lights, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes to amend the minutes. Alderman Rainey.
Thank you very much. Now, there is a situation we have where we have an ordinance on our agenda from October 26 that says the city manager is going to come back to us. What is the status of that ordinance is no action was taken, and it's really parliamentary procedure would have it still hanging on our ordinance, on our agenda. So some action had to have been taken, either to remove it from the agenda, to table it. Holding it over wouldn't work because that only works for two weeks. So something needs to happen with this ordinance, even if we failed to do it in the past, having nothing to do with the city clerk, if we did not table it.
City Manager?
Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey, as I read the minutes that have now just been approved, it says that Alderman Rainey moved approval of the recommendation. If you look in the paragraph above the recommendation, it is recommended the city council table this ordinance and direct the city manager to implement alternate pedestrian safety measures. So unless.
That's what I thought, but the city clerk is saying that this ordinance was not tabled. That's the only reason why I just stood up and mentioned that.
And, Madam Mayor, I think that would be a ruling of the chair to interpret the written word that is in the minutes, so.
I interpret that it's tabled. That's what it says.
I don't think anyone's wrong here. I think it's just a matter of the city clerk's captioning of the remainder of the motion was to approve the recommendation, and he amplified a portion of what was in the recommendation. So if the mayor is opining that that is how she's reading the minutes, then I would believe that, based on what is in the written word, that the ordinance was tabled.
Thank you. Moving right along. Alderman Rainey, does that conclude?
No. Now I'm going to go to Public Works. Resolution 89R09, which has to do with Verizon Wireless, that's going to be held and reported back on our next council meeting, our next AMPW meeting by the city manager. Then we have the, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then the only other item was the presentation by the Public Works Director, and that had to do with alternatives for solid waste, recycling, and yard waste, and we're going to continue that discussion at a special meeting on December 7 at 6 o'clock, and we're going to relocate, so to speak, the affordable housing presentation and substitute solid waste in its place. And that's it, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Rainey, what about A24? Township tax levy.
Oh, yes. I took that off the agenda because I voted against the budget, and therefore I feel obligated to vote against the tax levy. Ordinance 109009, the 2009 Evanston Township Tax Levy is for action tonight.
It's been moved and seconded, seeing no lights. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote on the Evanston Township Tax Levy?
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
The tax levy passes eight votes to one.
Madam Mayor.
City Manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as Alderman Rainey had indicated, the committee decided that it wished to speak further regarding the refuse item that was in committee. The committee suggested doing that at 6:00 PM as part of a previously scheduled special city council meeting on Monday, December 7. The committee also talked about the idea of postponing one of the items on that agenda, and that was the full council's discussion of affordable housing. So, Madam Mayor, either at this point or at some point before the end of the meeting, I'd like clearer direction from the council as to what your wishes are for the December 7 meeting.
Does anyone have any objection to meeting at 6 o'clock, is it?
The previously had been called, or had been stated to meet at 6 o'clock, was going to be a two-item council meeting agenda on affordable housing and the report of the Community Budget Task Force. The Administration Public Works Committee suggested that the affordable housing discussion be postponed to a later time so that there could be the discussion of the refuse item, either as I believe, Alderman Rainey, you were suggesting, that the committee would convene separately from the council prior to the scheduled full council meeting?
Yes, but to encourage all members of the council to attend.
Does anyone have any objection to delaying the affordable housing discussion to another time? All right. You have clear direction.
So, Madam Mayor, we will notice the full city council for 6:00 PM with the Administration and Public Works Committee starting their discussion, and the committee following immediately, the full council following immediately after the conclusion of that discussion.
Alderman Burris?
Because we're changing the meeting for the affordable housing, could we tonight at least get a date certain for that meeting in January? Because I think it's a very important item, but as we discussed in AP&amp;W, that it's not a budget item, so I'm fully believe we should do the refuge first, but if we can all get on the calendar for January tonight, that'd be great for affordable housing.
That may be more than, do you have any suggestions, City Manager?
Madam Mayor, your regular meetings would be on the 11th of January, the 25th of January. The third Monday is the 18th, which is a national holiday, so I don't know that that would be a good alternate date. If you wish to meet on Monday, January the 4th, to talk about affordable housing, or you could go to.
We have to have rules. We have to.
We have to have the rules, committee meeting.
So if you were to stay on Mondays, then either to include it as part of one of your regular council meetings on the 11th or 25th, or go to a special meeting perhaps into February. If you wanted to leave rules in Human Services, the first opportunity would be February 15.
How does?
My suggestion is that we look beyond budget liberation season.
Beyond, I would agree.
Because every opportunity is going to be crucial.
Yeah. No, we have so many meetings.
So I would suggest.
Alderman Burris, do you mind leaving it?
We have some certainty. Yeah, so maybe first available Monday in March or something.
March 1st.
March 1st would be rules in Human Services, and there seems to be reluctance to schedule on top of that, so that you would have the 15th of March.
The 5th of March.
The 29th is the fifth Monday.
Of what?
Come on, you are. That's a little far.
How about the 15th? If that's the best we can do. Is that all right, Alderman Holmes?
Well, it's not all right with me, but I, you know, I understand. I know when, I just think that affordable housing is a really important issue, and I just think that we keep delaying it, and I just, now we're into March. This is.
I think it'll be hard to give it the attention that it deserves during the budget process.
And then 3rd of March are open.
You want to try the 2nd or 3rd of March?
That's open.
Let me say this, though. Can I say something?
Yes, and then Alderman Wilson has his light on, so I really.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
Alderman Holmes, you know, I think we've given strong priority to affordable housing. It's just a report we wanted to be able to discuss because we have inclusionary housing, we have the housing fund, we've done a bunch of work in that area, so I don't think that we're giving it low priority. We're really talking about when is the best date to spend as much time possible to make that happen. Okay? In respect to all of those who work hard on the report and work in that area of work. Okay?
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I guess what I wondered is, I know that we just added the sanitation discussion to the 7th, but it looked like it was, to me, it seemed like it was a pretty thorough discussion at the AMPW meeting, and I, you know, I wasn't part of the committee, but no? Okay.
Alderman Burris?
I was just going to sort of echo Alderman Holmes' comment about, I think pushing it off until March, and I understand that we have budget coming up, but the Affordable Housing Task Force, they're coming to a conclusion at the end of December, and we've said that it's an important issue, and we need to give direction, and without getting this discussed and passed, I don't believe we can move forward with affordable housing. It will continue to languish out there, similar to how we're trying to push forward with Economic Development to give staff, give our city a direction. I believe it's important that we do something. We don't put this out really three months, and then we have a discussion, and then we make changes, and so we don't embark on affordable housing really until April or May of next year. That's really a long time, particularly in this economic climate with people needing rental assistance, people, you know, possibly going to foreclosure. I think we need to give full direction. So if there's any way that we can have this meeting sooner, I know all of us are meeting out, Wally has given us a lot of meetings this fall needed, but I believe this is an extremely, extremely important issue. If we can find a time before March, I would be really appreciative. Thank you.
Alderman Wilson?
I guess where I was heading was, the 7th could be a rather long meeting, but try to squeeze in some time, you know, for some of that discussion on the 7th. That's my inclination.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Yes, I would move that we schedule the affordable housing meeting on January 13, which is a Wednesday, and it looks pretty clear.
I would second that.
You're what?
13th. It's a Wednesday night.
There's Plan Commission, but.
It is, but you're not on the Plan Commission.
I know.
I have the Northwest Municipal Conference, but I'll try to find someone else to go.
That's a good idea. Moved and seconded.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Alderman Nguyen? Does that conclude your report? Alderman Nguyen?
Madam Mayor, all of our issues were covered on consent.
Good for you. Alderman Holmes? You are. My apologies, Alderman Jean Baptiste, I tried to get you out of it. I'll have to return the $20.
Yeah, with regard to this particular item, it is, what is it? Yeah, move acceptance of the 2009 Evanston Township, what is it? Audit. Okay, all right. The reason, I did pull it, so why am I sounding so confused? Because I didn't, I wasn't reading the language. The reason why I pulled it is because when at the Human Services Committee meeting, the township had made its presentation, and auditor had come to make its presentation as well, I was concerned because the financial report was done by the same entity that was auditing. And my understanding, I'm a layperson in this particular area, but my understanding is that you don't audit your own financial report. So I had asked the city manager to look into it, I talked to legal to try to get some clarity, and they've checked into it. CPA has to do it, so the CPA can do a financial report and audit itself. Okay. All right. When I spoke to Steve, Steve said, well, generally not, but only when it is a small entity that may not have the flexibility of having different contractors doing the work of financial report and auditing. So, I don't know, maybe you could share with us whatever the clarification is. I was just concerned about process.
It's not uncommon for a smaller governmental unit to have the auditor also prepare the comprehensive annual financial report, because usually these smaller units of the government, they just don't have the manpower to prepare it on their own. of the government, they just don't have the manpower to prepare it on their own. But commonly, what's done is the auditor will make a comment in their management letter disclosing this, and I haven't seen the management letter for the township, so I don't know if it's in there or not, but that probably would be the appropriate thing for the auditor to do, to just disclose it in that management letter.
Okay, well, the auditor at least disclosed it during his report to us, so I don't have a particular problem if that's the way we're supposed to go. The report itself was consistent with the report last year. There were some issues about segregation of, of duties, which is not very possible within a small office. He talks about technology, same information he had spoken about last year. So, I don't have a problem with going forward, it's just, I was just concerned about process. So, move approval, I think it was seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, I think we need a roll call vote.
Alderman Win.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Aye.
Nine to zero, the motion passes. That, I think, brings us to call of the wards.
No.
What are we missing?
Oh, one.
Oh, one, it was taken off.
Taken off the agenda. Yeah, it was removed previously.
No discussion, oh, it's previously removed.
It was, uh, removed before the meeting. So, beginning with Alderman Win?
No report, Madam Mayor. Oh, wait, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Alderman Win. Alderman Wilson?
Essentially the same thing, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and have a safe and enjoyable holiday.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Same, have happy Thanksgiving.
Alderman Tindham?
Yes, I'm hoping for a happy Thanksgiving for everyone. There has been, drawn to my attention, and I think, obviously, the police are aware of this, that the opportunistic burglaries in the 6th Ward have sort of been elevated to forced entry. We saw two around the same time on the same block. These are daytime entries, they seem to know when people are not home, and, you know, that takes it to another level, and I know that maybe not last year, but probably the year before, there was a rash of burglaries that happens, I think, starting with Thanksgiving and through the holidays. So, happy holidays, would be truly happy if we could, you know, check this and not have a lot of stuff going on like that.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Effective January 1st, the state of Illinois will be outlawing the use of mobile phones in your cars while operating motor vehicle in school zones and in work construction zones. And effective January 1st, the state of Illinois will also be outlawing the use of text messaging and email messaging while you're operating a motor vehicle. I'd like to make a reference to Human Services Committee for an ordinance that fills the remaining gap, Madam Chair, almost, and that would be a ordinance making it unlawful in Evanston to operate a motor vehicle while using a mobile phone. That would be a general ban on cell phone use while driving, not just in school and work zones. Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
The only report I have is to ask Alderman Grover a question. Can we use headsets?
Thank you, Alderman Rainey, I'm interested in two hands on the wheel and both eyes on the road, so headsets would be permitted under the draft ordinance.
All right, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Percy.
I no longer oppose Alderman Grover's recommendation.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris?
I agree with Alderman's, Alderman Grover's banning of cell phones. I want to thank everyone from the 9th Ward who attended the 9th Ward Town Hall meeting last week. It was really long, and we appreciate, I really appreciate you staying for as long as you did, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone on council and the mayor and the residents of Evanston.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. The 1st Ward is going to be busy over the next three weeks. We're having five neighborhood meetings on various topics, beginning tomorrow night. We are meeting with city staff at the Evanston Public Library from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. The Hinman Avenue neighbors, including Grove Street, Lake Street, Judson Avenue neighbors regarding demolition and construction at the Georgian, which is about ready to begin. December 1st, which is a week from tomorrow, we're having our 1st Ward quarterly meeting from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the Evanston Public Library. December 3rd is the CTA Purple Line Vision Study Open House that affects five L-stations used by 1st Ward residents, and I'm encouraging everyone to attend that, your, as the mayor...
Thank you, Alderman Fisk, I completely forgot to do that, thank you very much.
That's all right. We do want to get those, those viaducts repaired and get the stations repaired as well, so your turnout is very important. And then, December 15th is a ZBA meeting regarding the appeal of the Type II restaurant at Seaberry Great Room. Also, on December 3rd, at, I think at 7:30, is the Community Conversations Meeting, which generally focuses on property standards issues affecting student residences and student behavior in the 1st and 5th Ward. I bring this up to address a little bit about what our goal was tonight regarding Northwestern University. The 1st Ward is really where Northwestern and the community, where the rubber hits the road, of these five meetings, four of them, 80% of these meetings are regarding Northwestern issues, and as much as I support the lofty goals that were mentioned here tonight, there are some very serious communication issues between the university and the 1st Ward. I was very happy today to be invited and attended a meeting with Marty Shapiro in his office where we were able to discuss these concerns today, as well as things that we might do to work with the university in a cooperative effort to improve communication with residents. Students are invited to our 1st Ward meeting, Mike McGee, the ASG president, is going to come and speak. We really need to improve the dialogue between students and community residents in the 1st Ward, but we do need to remember that there are also policies in place regarding the communication between the university and the neighborhood, especially in terms of the NU City Committee meeting, and there has been a very sorry lack of communication regarding the university's use of property in the zoning districts surrounding campus, and hopefully, that will improve. President Shapiro told me today that I could call him with any concerns, and that's my main concern. So, hooray for the lofty goals, we all love those, but really, we have some other more mundane issues in the 1st Ward that are very important to the, to the residents of the Ward. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Yes, happy Thanksgiving, everybody. I just want to follow up with Alderman Fisk and say, the Northwestern-Evanston relationship is still a city issue, so 1st Ward is a subset of the, of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss matters of real estate, litigation, and minutes pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2, C 511, and 21.
Thank you. Roll call, Alderman Rainey? Oh, okay. Do we have a roll call, City Clerk?
Alderman Win.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
The motion passes. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to know, Madam Mayor, I want to know if the presentation by Suzette Eggleston is online, the presentation she gave to AMPW, because I think it's critical that our residents review this information.
It will be.
Thank you.
Thank you.